This conference will now be recorded.
And at this time, we do call this meeting to order. And on tonight, we will be led in an invocation by Reverend Logan. We ask Reverend Logan to come in tonight and lead us in our invocation of prayer.
We honor our chairman, the board, and all of our honorable members of the board. And to everyone that is attending tonight, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for life, health, strength, and a sound mind. We thank you for those that are putting their lives at risk for the safety of others. We are asking for your blessing upon the meeting tonight. We seek your face for directions and guidance, that we might serve our youth, families, and communities to the best of our ability. Help us not to lose focus on the purpose of our servitude. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. We thank you, Reverend Logan, for leading us in prayer. And at this time, we will have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. And I'm going to ask if board member Mr. Drury from the Denton District, if he would lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance on tonight.
Mr. Elliott, I'm here. My apologies, my mute button was off to the side.
All right, sir.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God. So help me God with justice and liberty.
Thank you, Mr. Drury, for our Pledge of Allegiance. Fellow board members, as you know, we are in a continuation meeting from our last board meeting. And the agenda is before us. The only change that we have on our agenda for tonight would be on our EOP. There were some last-minute changes to be made to the EOP. Instead of bringing it to us tonight, that particular item will be carried over onto our July meeting, the Emergency Operations Plan. That will be item 2020-12 that's on the agenda. We will not be entertaining that tonight due to some last-minute changes that need to be done before the board. So excluding that are the items and the items we covered last week, could I get a roll call vote to adapt the agenda for on tonight?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And I did hear Mr. Holmes' roll call vote right before Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Fellow board members, as you know, last week, we took care of our consent items. We did approve of all of our consent items. So on tonight, we will go directly into new business. And as I stated before, if you look at the first item, new business, the EOP, that is going to be brought back to our agenda on the July meeting, the first Thursday in July. So the first order of business that we will entertain tonight is Resolution 2020-13, the Big Grant Boat Infrastructure Grant, Virginia Health Department. And that will be, the discussion on that will be led off by Mrs. Rollins. So, Mrs. Rollins, at this time, could you come and join and lead this discussion on the Big Grant?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Drury, other members of the Board of Supervisors, and all the public who are assembled at this virtual meeting. You do have it for you for your consideration is the Boating Infrastructure Grant Resolution 2020-13. And the resolution pertains to the county's, again, grant award from the Virginia Department of Health under the United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Boating Act. The resolution before you essentially acknowledges that the county understands its obligation to provide long-term maintenance of the property in accordance with the BIG program grant rules and the following useful life parameters, as it pertains to the docks, the piers, the ramp, the gangway, and the fuel system, a 20-year useful lifespan, and the bathroom facility 40 years. The grant award that the county anticipates receiving is approximately $1.1 million. And we do expect to receive it, Mr. Chairman, at the end of June 30th, excuse me, prior to the end of the fiscal year. So we're asking the board tonight to approve this resolution regarding the useful life obligation and maintenance of the facilities at Grace Creek Marina.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Is there any discussion for board members on this presentation? Any questions?
Chairman Elliott, my-
... Yes, Mr. Drury, go ahead.
Ms. Rollins, just two questions. The $1.1 million grant, will that be, is that in our present budget? Or would we have to, in other words, is that going to be additional revenue to our budget we approved?
No, sir. Ms. Wendell is on, and I will call on her for additional assistance with this question. But no, sir, this is pretty much a reimbursement of monies that we have already spent. So this was part of the revenue side of the expenditure equation for those activities at the marina.
I can't get the door open.
Ms. Rollins, my second question is, how would this grant interfere with nonprofits such as the Boy Scouts request? Can we make, is it an exemption for that? Or do you know?
I think, trying to make it a short answer, Mr. Drury and others, in discussion with the grant advisor, as to the request for the Boy Scouts, that, again, is pretty much up to the county in terms of, you know, how we want to entertain that request since it is a county-owned facility. So according to the grant advisor, there would not be any penalties, I guess, associated with that if the county elected to honor that request.
Thank you, and that's all.
Okay. And I want to ask real quickly, Ms. Wendell, did I answer the first question correctly, ma'am? I believe I did, but I'll just verify.
Yes, it's a reimbursement of money previously spent in prior fiscal years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Judy Little, and I just would like to thank those who gave us the grant to the Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Boating, because that's an added advantage and an added thing for our community that we are not having to pay for. And I think the citizens need to be thankful for it.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Could we, there are no other questions or comments? Could we get a motion on adopting the Resolution 2020-13 Boating Infrastructure Grant from Virginia Health Department?
A motion to approve, Kenneth Holmes.
Have a motion. Can we have a second?
Second, Judy Little.
Has been properly moved and seconded. There are no other questions. We have a roll call vote on the adoption of Resolution 2020-13.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Next item of business is number three on our agenda is Resolution 2020-14, EMS Billing Fee Increase. Again, Mrs. Rollins, in your court.
Yes, sir. Good evening again. So the Resolution 2020-14 pertains to revising the emergency ambulance transport fees. If you remember during the budget process, we advised that the county could receive additional revenue by adopting the maximum fee permissible in terms of the service levels that you see in your resolution for medical transport services. The ordinance is required as the board previously, in 2014, elected to establish these fees and ordinance. So all we asking for the board's consideration this evening is to adopt Resolution 2020-14, which establishes the new fees for ambulance services, basic life support, $500, advanced life support, one and two is $600 and $775 respectively, treatment, no transport, $150, and the mileage, all service levels, at $14.25 per mile. And the last item, I'm sorry, active members of the Sari Volunteer Rescue Squad and volunteer fire departments, the fee is accept and allow a portion of insurance as complete payment. And it will include all the service levels that's included in the resolution for your consideration.
Question, Mr. Elliott. Ms. Rollins?
Yes, ma'am.
Question, the fees will also be offset by insurance for all persons requiring service, am I correct? That's what I thought it was at one time. We accept their insurance payments?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. This is, you're correct.
Thank you.
There's no additional cost associated to the patient that's being transported?
Thank you.
The collection of the insurance. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rollins, this is Michael Drury.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
Have we lost Jay?
It looks like he is on steel. So I believe Mr. Brown is probably on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, let's see here. I did receive. Thank you, Mr. Drury. Yes, Ms. Elliott, we have dropped you from the call, so.
Hello?
Yes, we're waiting to get the chair back connected.
Are we still trying to be connected? Hello?
Yes, sir. I hear you, Ms. Rollins.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Chase reconnecting now.
Okay.
You still here, Mr. Holmes?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Broadband is coming soon.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, we see you connected soon.
Mr. Drury?
Kenneth Holmes is still around.
Ms. Rollins, I'm sorry, I had my mute on.
Judy Little is still here.
Mr. Drury and members of the board?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott is still having technical difficulties. Mr. Brown has advised that Mr. Elliott is, looks like he's joining, but obviously cannot hear. So we are trying to see if we can get Mr. Elliott to actually use the phone feature and dial-in as opposed to using the video access.
Okay, thank you.
Did you hear me, Mr. Drury?
Yes. Ms. Rollins, do you want me to take over until he comes in? I don't mind waiting.
Mr. Elliott is, he's reconnecting now, so he should be a couple minutes, very.
Hello?
Okay, Chairman Elliott, I think we got you back.
Yes. I'm here. Can you guys hear me now?
I'm Kenneth Holmes.
Judy Little, yeah.
All right, I had difficulty with my internet here being so cloudy this evening. So I want my phone there so we can continue. Where did we leave off? Or did you all proceed?
We stopped where you stopped. Where did we stop?
Resolution.
Resolution 2014. Yes. Is there any other questions on the resolution? If not, we will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution on the EMS billing fee increase.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Has been properly moved and seconded. Have been properly moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, Mrs. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Next item is County and Sheriff's Department Agreement Regarding Dispatch in Our New Building. At this time, Ms. Rollins will present that to us.
Ms. Rollins, you are muted if you are trying to speak.
Have we lost Ms. Rollins?
Everyone, we're still waiting for Mr. Brown to make contact with Mr. Elliott. So I appreciate everyone's patience.
Ms. Elliott is back online.
Unmute for a second, sir.
Ms. Rollins, I'm here. Can the board members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, sir. I don't believe Ms. Rollins can. I'm letting her know that she seems to be missing some of the conversation.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me okay?
I can hear you at this point.
Yes, okay. I do apologize for that. I was not aware that, the wait was for myself. I was waiting for Mr. Elliott and Mr. Brown to get connected. May I ask, Mr. Elliott, what item are you all waiting for me to present?
We are waiting on the County and Sheriff's Department Agreement.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. As you're aware, in the month of March, before the pandemic hit, the Board of Supervisors met in a work session to discuss a proposed agreement between the County of Sari and the sheriff as it relates to the management and operations of the Emergency Communications Center. Since that time, I have been working with the county attorneys in draft- Since that time, I have been working with the county attorneys and draft the agreement that will outline certain aspects of the agreement as it pertains to the emergency dispatch center operations. In front of you, you do have the agreement this evening. The agreement was shared with the sheriff for his review, and the sheriff has advised that he is willing to sign the agreement. And tonight, we're asking the board of supervisors to sign the agreement between the county board of supervisors and Sheriff Turner as it relates to the management and operations of the county's emergency communications.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Fellow board members, we do have before us an agreement between the sheriff department and the county for us to adopt this agreement via working document for these two departments. Are there any questions or concerns or discussion on this matter?
It appears that, all right, it appears that both groups have agreed to work with this situation, so I'm pleased with that.
So am I, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes and Ms. Little. Any other comments or concerns? If not, we.
Chairman Elliott, Mike Drury?
Yes, Mr. Jury.
Ms. Rollins, I was not at that workshop meeting. I had to work that evening. But will we bring up the issue if, when we move in the dispatch to the new building, will there be further conversations about how the sheriff will cover his 24 hours? The conversations he's had with us in the past about that?
Yes, sir. Certainly, that additional dialogue can be had. As a point of reference also, as it pertains to additional information that the emergency communications manager in coordination with the sheriff have been developing policies and procedures and guidelines as pertains to the new facility and, you know, when the actual move takes place in dispatch. So there are additional set of guidelines that have been developed, and those guidelines, again, are slated to help with the additional operations of our emergency communications dispatch. So absolutely, those additional conversations, we would be more than happy to have and share with the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, Mr. Calhoun, if you have any comments at this time?
No, sir, I don't have any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. If not, we will entertain a motion to adopt the agreement between the county and the sheriff's department and to our communications department.
A motion to approve the agreement between the two departments.
Mike Drury, second.
It has been probably moving second. We have a roll call vote. Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to add one more thing that in conversations with both Sheriff Turner and also with Mr. Justin Smith, the emergency communications manager, that things are working well in our emergency communications dispatch. So just wanted to add that for your information this evening. So we are very pleased the progress that has been made since that March meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we move to item number five. The new business is the Sari County Employee Reentry Plan, Plan for Phase One. We would have some information given to us on our reentry plan by Ms. Rollins at this time.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm going to also ask Mr. Phelps to be ready to chime in if needed. This, again, information was presented to you at the June 4 meeting. Just for your information this evening, wanted to advise the board of supervisors and also the public of the county's proposed reentry plan, as stated in previous meetings with the board, that it was the county's intentions to follow the phased-in approach from the governor. And what staff have been doing over the past several weeks is asking each other, and Mr. Phelps has been diligently working with each and every department to make sure that what guidance that we are putting in place are a guidance that has been put together by the CDC, by the Department of Health, and all the regulatory agencies to make sure there is a safe reentry plan that has been put together. So the plan that you have before you for your information this evening does reflect those guidelines. We, each meeting that we have on Tuesdays, we talk about the reentry plan. And again, I want to say that he has taken many of the extra precautions that have been given to him by the various department heads to make sure that when the county employees do start to come back, that we can best ensure that we have the protections to the best of our ability when we do reenter. The plan that has been put before you indicates that we want to have a plan whereby employees are coming back on an alternative scheduling, and that we have solidified that scheduling at least two to three weeks before we begin to discuss any plans for the public to reenter. A lot of the guidance that we have been received to date also has come from other organizations. I want to say that our county attorneys have been proactive in sending us additional guidance as it relates to temperature taking and the wearing of a face mask, because obviously sometimes that gets to be controversial issues when those things are mandated. So again, this is the reentry plan right now that we are looking to put in place. And you have any questions? Mr. Phelps, of course, is on the call, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. I've had the opportunity to look at the plan, and I like how it is taken out, but my only question, and I believe it is already self-explained on our agenda, that even though we have the plan, it is still up to us at the appropriate time to initiate the plan. At this present, we will still be doing basically what we're doing now. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Because right now, we are pleased to state that our employees are doing the continuity of operations. Again, I've added that we're doing a very good job in making sure that the services that are public need are being met. Obviously, maybe one or two things in the nutshell may be missed, but I do want to commend again publicly our department team lead for the continuity of operations that we have in place. We were looking for additional guidance, and Mr. Phelps has it in his report. But if it's the appropriate time, Mr. Elliott, I will ask him to go ahead and share the results of the testing that was done two weeks ago in the county. I believe that was one of the concerns that was shared by the board in terms of waiting to see exactly what the health department testing was when we had 99 citizens in the county tested for the virus. So if it's okay, may I ask Mr. Phelps to share that information?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board, board members, Ms. Rollins. I received notification today from the Cretia Health District that the results of our May 28 COVID testing, out of 99 Sari County citizens that were tested, we only had one positive case that was reported. So we.
Awesome.
And, Mr. Chair, may I add that, you know, we are in constant contact with other county administrators and city managers on various calls. And, you know, there is a hodgepodge of different things that are going on in terms of, you know, how people are approaching their reentry plan. And what we do know is that most folks are doing what they feel is the best thing for their community. So there is no one mandate approach to all. So again, we are very specific as to how we feel that our reentry plan is going to work for us. Right now, we are, again, I stated, Mr. Phelps is putting in, you know, protective barriers at some desk locations whereby department heads have requested. I think one of the main things that we want to definitely say that we're going to have in place is that single entry point at the front entrance of the government center whereby that would be the entrance whereby employees will be coming in and having their temperature taken. Temperature taken. And, you know, we still have to work through those few logistics, but at the same token, we want to make sure that we have all of those things, the social distancing, demarcation, and the signage as it relates to protections and all that will be in place prior to permitting employees on a more regular schedule, even though we do have a lot of them who are coming back every so often and making sure that they're doing what they need to do to continue operation.
Ms. Rollins, I'm back on.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Are there any other questions from fellow board members?
Ms. Rollins, if you don't mind, when they come through the front door, are you speaking of the door? You call the front door by your office?
No, Ms. Little. That would be the door by the court, by the district court, the one that we enter for board meetings.
Okay. Would our, how wide is our hallway? I'm thinking about people coming and exiting because they do have to go back out, and we want to practice the six feet in between. So we're going to have people passing each other. So is the hallway, or are you going to align like they are doing at the grocery stores, you're six feet apart, going up and down that hallway?
Yes, I'm going to refer that question to Mr. Phelps.
All right, sir. All right. We have the, you can hear me now, right, Frank?
I can, yes.
Okay, what we're going to do is, is we're going to have a single entry door, which will be the handicap door, will be the entry door, and the far door on the left-hand side, if you're facing into the building, will be the exit door. So that center door will not be used, so that gives distance between entering and exiting the building there. You know, we are, you know, right now, the governor has required everybody, when they enter the building, to wear a mask. So we will be asking everybody, citizens and employees, to wear masks. Now, we haven't gone as far as putting arrows or rope down the hall to, for, to give us, you know. We hope that everybody will walk like we drive, walk down on the right-hand side, come back, you know. But we can't, we can't address that. We would have to do it with, we wouldn't be able to do rope or things along that lines because depending on where you're going to. One of the things that we're trying to do is to minimize the amount of traffic in the building. With that single entry point, the personnel that will be staffing that will have phone capabilities to call each department so that we can find out what that individual entering the building. If it's not an employee, we can find out what, if, when it comes down to the public, we can find out what that individual is entering the building for. And if we have, we're going to have a kiosk at the door there. So if it's just to get a form, we should have those forms there readily available so to limit the amount of people in the building. But then also, the personnel that's there can phone ahead to the department to give them heads up on who's coming in and what they're coming for, and that would also help limit the amount of time that they're in the building.
Thank you. Sounds like you have a plan.
Yes, ma'am. We've been working on it as a team, so.
Very good. I, I, I'll the question I have before any other board members. Do we have, I know it's a fluid situation, but as far as the COVID numbers that we have now, do we have a projected time in which we would implement this phase?
Yes, sir. The projected timeframe, and I've learned from others that it's not good to start new plans on a Monday. Okay? So the projected timeframe right now is looking at employees coming back on the ultimate schedule on the 23rd of June, and to have us in place on that alternative schedule the week of the 23rd, the following week through the 4th of July, and the following week through the 6th, and having employee, excuse me, and having public reentry possibly on the 14th of July. So that is the tentative, the most recent tentative plan that we've discussed in terms of the reentry plan. And again, this is based on, as you stated, Mr. Elliott, the fact that the situation is still very fluid. If there's any other adverse changes or anything, unfortunately, you know, happens that we, you know, had not planned for, or if the changes in the numbers, or if there's additional directives by the governor, then certainly we understand that we may have to make adjustments. But to answer your question, that is the tentative dates that we are looking at for employee schedule and for possibly public reentry. And we will make sure that we communicate that date specifically for public reentry way ahead of time to make sure that it's, you know, posted on the proper channels.
Mr. Elliott, does Tim Calhoun hear that?
Comments from board members?
Yes, sir, Mr. Elliott. This is Tim Calhoun.
Yes, Ms. Calhoun. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps, if I can ask a couple of questions. Number one, you indicated in your statement that the, the community is requested to wear a mask in the building. Is that a request or requirement?
Well, the governor did make it a requirement, and that would be, that would be up to you guys on whether you're going to follow through with the governor's recommendations as being a requirement. It is, it's a requirement to maintain social distancing, and it's a requirement to wear a mask in any public building. So that's, that's the route I would take. I believe we have signs that have been produced that state that this is a social, maintain social distancing, and that masks are required. So we're, we are hoping that most citizens will come with a mask. If they don't, we do have some masks that we can provide to them.
That was going to be my other question. If they walked up and didn't have one, would we have some available? And my next question is, what are the number of confirmed cases in the county at this time? Your most recent number?
Fourteen confirmed with one unfortunate death.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I do want to add to Mr. Calhoun's question as well. And I mentioned earlier that we have received additional guidance from the county attorney. And one of the things that we've been looking at is the guidance in terms of the EEOC as far as the requirement to wear the mask, to Mr. Phelps' point. And it states, and I'll go ahead and read it. In this particular guidance, it states that the EEOC guidance does not state that employees may require, excuse me, that employers may require employees to wear masks when in the workplace, and it talks about disability needs as it related to reasonable accommodations. But again, one of the things that I've been listening to all week, and I was just on a conference earlier today, is that the governor's order in terms of requiring the face mask is that is one of the things that we as protection for our employees and also protection for the public is to have the requirement of a face mask. So that, I want to put that out there as to something that we would like to make sure that we want to be able to enforce and have that as a requirement. Mr. Chair?
Ms. Rollins?
Yes.
My question with the mask for the employees, once they enter the building and they get in their space, are we, are we asking them to sit there all day long at their desk with the mask on when they're not talking with anybody or have someone with them?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Oh, okay, because I was just thinking it could be very uncomfortable for them.
That's definitely. Yeah, that is in the common areas. If you would, on the guidance that was provided to you, the wearing of the mask is in the common areas when you're out and about, in the hallways, or going to the restroom. That is where we would expect employees to wear the mask.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair? Yes, I'm back. All right, are there any other comments on the phase plan, phase one plan to come back into the county building and for employees? If not, we, thank you, Ms. Rollins, for developing the plan, you and the emergency team. Mr. Phelps, thank you so very much. Next item on the agenda, next item on the agenda is the request for public hearing. We have a public hearing on the CARES Act. And again, Ms. Rollins, it's in your court. Excuse me, no, 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 let me back up. I'm going ahead of myself. Got two, two things I'm looking at. Number six on the new business, it is the board's consideration appointment for a county administrator. Board members, can you, did you, did you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Fellow board members, I would just like to start off the conversation discussing the appointment of county administrator, to thank Mrs. Rollins for the job she has done for us as an acting county administrator since January until this time. Her work has been commendable, she has gotten us through the budget process, and I can say as a chair, she's been invaluable to me. She's related information to me that I've been able to get back to fellow board members. And I think we will be doing ourselves a disservice if we did not consider Ms. Rollins for the position of county administrator for Suri County.
Mr. Chairman, to chime into that, I would like to commend Ms. Acting County Administrator for the job that she's been doing and the service that she has been providing. It's been very well done, very professional. She's a great collaborator with other departments and other entities and counties and towns. And so I agree with you, I think that to be fair to her, to, in the job that she's doing and give her understanding, she also has been certified now as a manager for the community. So I, at this time, see no reason why we should not consider presenting her as our new county administrator. Once we, I know we have to go through some things, but I agree that she's doing a great job for Suri County. She's been with us, I think, seventeen years.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Are there any other comments or concerns from board members?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury. Just.
Yes, Mr. Drury?
Ms. Rollins, again, just to reiterate what's been said, hey, thanks so much for what you've done through this interim period and in the past years as well, and for hanging in there. And I really appreciate your attention to detail and responsiveness to my questions as well as citizen questions. It's made it, made it a bit easier. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drury, and thank you, Mr. Elliott, and Mrs. Little, and those who have made the comments. I, if it's fitting for Mr., for me, Mr. Chair, unless any other board members have anything else to say, I'll make a comment.
Any other board members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ms. Rollins, I also like to thank you, only being on the board this short period of time. In my opinion, you've done a great job, and especially during this pandemic. I'm sorry that we have not been able to meet in face-to-face and talk with each other more. I'm looking forward to that. And again, thank you very much for your service and your continued service coming forward.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Calhoun, and again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Vice Chairman, all the board members who have spoken. I certainly do appreciate those comments, and I just want to say that I certainly look forward to working with you as a board and working with the community also. What I have done over the last past six months, I have not done alone, it's been through your support, it has been through the collaboration that has happened amongst all the department teams that I have been working with, so diligent over the last past six months. I do enjoy collaborating with those in this community. I think it is key, as Mrs. Little stated, in terms of building the relationships with the members of the board and with the members of the community and the various stakeholders of this community. So I thank you so very much for those comments, and then I do appreciate your vote of confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Fellow board members, I believe that we do have the consensus of the board from discussion that it would be in our best interest at this time to move to adopt Ms. Rollins as our county administrator, to take off the acting role. I think she's proven herself to this point, and at this time, it seems like she has agreed without us putting a motion on the, on the table. But could we have a motion at this time in regards to Ms. Rollins becoming the county administrator for Suri County?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll.
Yes, it has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, we have a roll call vote for Ms. Chapman on Ms. Rollins being the county administrator for Suri County.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes, one more time, if you can hear us, your roll call vote.
We do have, we do have a form consensus of Ms. Rollins becoming the county administrator. I believe that Mr. Holmes would vote, in favor, I can't vote for him, but we do have a majority vote. So we welcome Ms. Rollins on board and the motion is carried. At this time, we will move to.
Chair, this is Mike Drury. May I speak for a minute?
Yes, sir.
I, I assume, and this is just directed to you and Ms. Rollins, I assume that the county attorney will be drawing up a contract that we will, will consider at our next meeting?
Yes, sir. We are, we will be in closed session on this item at our next meeting in July. We did not have to go in closed session to appoint her to this position for contract negotiations that will be in closed session at our next meeting. And we will be able to have in-depth conversation with our newest county administrator at that time.
Yeah, and to Ms. Rollins and the board, I, Ms. Rollins, I hope you will, I consider, no, we need to do a job description and, and so forth with you. So of course, all board members and Ms. Rollins, give it, give it some thought, because I think you, it's only fair to you to have good and clear guidance. So, so you know, know what, what, how can I say it? Whether you're doing good, bad, or indifferent, so, and that's a, trying to assist. And thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you all again, and I did not intend for my comments to be premature. It was just after all of the comments, it was, I just felt it, compelled just to say thank you at that time. So again, thank you all again for officially your vote of confidence. Thank you.
All is well, and we will pick up contract negotiations and job description discussions in our closed session in the days to come. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, request for public hearing for the CARES Act. Ms. Rollins?
Yes, you do have before you a request to have a public hearing at your July meeting on the $560,295 that the county did receive on June 1st for the coronavirus aid relief and economic security, which is referred to as the CARES Act of 2020. In accordance with Code Section Virginia 15.2-2507, an amendment which exceeds 1% of the total expenditures that's shown in the adopted budget must be accomplished by publishing a notice of a meeting and a public hearing. So tonight, we're just asking for your consideration to have that public hearing on July 2nd. Again, as I stated, the county has already received that funding. We signed up on the certification in May, and that permitted all localities to receive that funding prior to June 15th, and was notified by our treasurer that our funds were received on June 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Board members, what's your pleasure on the request for a public hearing on the CARES Act?
Mike Drury, so move.
Judy Little, second.
And probably move in second. Ms. Chapman, roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. At this time, we will have a request for public hearing from Mr. Saunders in reference to a solar, solar system, Spring Grove Solar System, number three.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Good, good, yes, this is an update to the Spring Grove Solar 3 LLC, a request for a public hearing. At their May 18th, 2020 meeting, the Suri County Planning Commission forwarded recommendations to the Board of Supervisors on the following three applications for Spring Grove Solar 3 LLC. It's a plan amendment 2020-01, conditional rezoning 2020-01, and conditional use permit 2020-02. These applications relate to the expansion of the urban grid land holdings for solar electric generating facilities in the county under CUPs number 2018-03 and -04. The subject property is along Colonial Trail West, approximately three quarters of a mile west of Holly Bush Road, and is roughly across the street from the Suri Hunt Club. This item is before you tonight to request approval to advertise for public hearings for these three items before the Board of Supervisors at their July 2nd meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. What would be the pleasure of the board on the request for public hearing for the Spring Grove Solar System?
Mr. Chairman, Judy Little, I do serve on the Planning Commission as the board rep, and the board, the commissioners, except for two voted for all of the conditions. And so I would move that the board would hold the public hearing to hear the Spring Grove Solar 3 LLC request.
And most, do we have a second? And probably move in second. I know other discussion. We have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Calhoun?
I have to abstain from this vote, please.
We do, we do have the consensus of the board, we have a majority vote, so the motion is carried. At this time, we're moving, moving right along to our public hearing for tonight. We have four items for public hearing. Ms. Rollins will come with an opening statement, and we will be then joined by Ms. Danielle Powell.
Okay, the first item for the public hearing this evening pertains to the ordinance to redock the emergency ordinance approved by the Board of Supervisors back on April the 23rd concerning the continuity of government operations during the declared COVID-19 pandemic. The code section referenced is 15.2-1413. And then the ordinance is to extend the expiration date of that particular ordinance to no later than October 23rd, 2020. And this ordinance tonight is the same as all other jurisdictions have been adopting as it pertains to the ability and the necessity of being able to continue virtual meetings and other matters while we're still in the pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. We will now have a public hearing on Ordinance 2020-02, Continuity of Government. We do open it to the public at this time. Are there any comments from the public on the public hearing on the continuity of government? If not, we will move to item number two, Ordinance 2020-03, the meal tax.
Yes, Ms. Powell is going to present this item. If you recall, Mr. Chairman and members of the board in public, that this was a recommendation in the fiscal year 2021 budget as it pertains to diversification of the county's revenue stream and implementing a meal tax that the county could do effective with new legislation, July 1, 2020. So the budget information that was presented to you had indicated that if the county was to implement a meal tax, we did include in our budget a revenue stream of approximately, and again, as you can imagine, this would be a first-year implementation. The revenue number that we provided was a very conservative number. And that number was $80,000 that had been included in your New Year's budget for meal tax revenue. And Mrs. Powell will introduce the ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Powell, we're waiting on you. Do we have Ms. Powell online? Do you have any contact with her, Ms. Rollins?
I am attempting to do that now. And if she is not on, I can go ahead and walk through the ordinance, but I am trying to make contact. through the ordinance, but I am trying to make contact with Ms. Powell.
Okay, thank you.
Mi- Mr. Chair, this is Mike Gray in the interim.
Yes, Mr. Jury.
Are we gonna vote, we, we're holding the public hearing, are we gonna vote on each item as we go, or what's the process?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna get the introduction of each one of them and then come back and vote on it, to try and expedite things, but, uh, since we are waiting, uh, Ms. Powell, we can, uh, vote on the first ordinance at this time. Are there any, uh, questions?
Sorry, Mr. Elliott, Ms. Powell says she was on.
Okay, Ms. Powell. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great. I apologize, I'm not sure what happened. Um, I've been talking for like five minutes. Um, so, before we move on to the meals tax, um, it, it, it sounded as if we were starting the public hearing for the continuity of government ordinance, and so I think if we're done with that, we should probably go ahead and close that hearing. And then vote on that.
Okay. Uh, fellow board members, uh, we have before us ordinance twenty twenty dash zero two, continuity of government. Uh, what is your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve that ordinance, continuity of government.
Mike Gray, second.
Has been probably move in second, Ms. Chapman, could we roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes. Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried, and we will now move to the meal tax, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Rollins, for handling the first one and giving an overview of the, uh, meals tax ordinance. Um, I will just add a little bit of additional information to what Ms. Rollins has already stated. Um, the ordinance before you imposes a six percent meals tax that will be on prepared food and beverages sold for human consumption, which is in a restaurant, or those foods that are prepared or sold by a grocery store or a convenience store. Um, the adoption of this ordinance would take effect as of July one, and it would apply in the county and in the towns, excluding those towns that already have a, um, meals tax ordinance. There is, if you have the ordinance before you, there is one, um, amendment to it that is recommended by staff, and that would be to remove the very last section, um, number, I'm pulling it up, which would be, um, section sixteen dash five sixty-nine, the discount, um, of three percent, if that could just be removed after reviewing that and having conversations with staff. And due to the, um, financial constraints and the, the need for the meals tax ordinance, we recommend that that last section of the ordinance be removed, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions on the board? There be no question, thank you, Ms. Powell. We open, uh, now to the public for the public hearing, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash three, meal, meals tax.
Hello, uh, this is, uh, Diane Cheek, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, this is Diane Cheek from the Surrey District, uh, maybe Ms. Powell could answer these questions. I just have a couple of questions, um, in my review of the ordinance. Um, I was wondering, uh, what is the plan for reporting of the taxes on a monthly basis? The ordinance indicates that, uh, reports will be made, um, for, as the commissioner may prescribe. If this ordinance goes into effect on July the first, how will sellers know how to submit reports that will be due by August the twelfth? Is there a public awareness activity that will help sellers know how to submit the reports? And my second question is, are agritourism sales exempt from this ordinance? Thank you.
Any other, uh, comments from the public on this? If there are no other comments from the public, what is, what is the pleasure on the board on ordinance twenty twenty dash three?
Mr. Chairman, you waiting on a motion to move this forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, uh, moved that we would, um, you said we need to have a public hearing?
No, to, to accept the, uh, the ordinance.
Okay, I've moved that we would. That we would, um, move forward with the ordinance to, for the meals tax, and to the latest question, I'm sure that, um, staff will get back with her and others about how that should happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, I will let you, I will, may I, um, interject with the answer to Ms. Cheek's question prior to the motion being carried? Okay, um, Mrs. Powell, um, was attempting to answer the question, but I just received a communi- communication from her that, um, you all could not hear her. So I do not know what her answer is, but I can provide some additional information. Um, I, I want to, uh, Ms. Cheek, uh, ask the question regarding, uh, how would, uh, how would that be handled? Um, of course, we have been in conversation with, uh, Mr. Jenkins, the Commissioner of Revenue, and also the Treasurer, who also would be impacted, um, by the adoption of this ordinance, and, uh, he is, uh, latest conversation with him is, he has been in conversation with, of course, uh, fellow commissioners, um, as it relates to the best practices for implementing a meals tax. Now, obviously, as stated, um, July first is almost here, uh, and because our budget was adapted in May, um, it could possibly be that, you know, it could not be implemented right at the beginning of July. Um, the number of businesses in the county, um, that would actually be impacted by this is very minimum. I think, um, according to Mr. Jenkins, um, today, I think we counted perhaps four or five, if I remember, and I do not know as far as whether or not, um, Ms. Cheek's question as it pertains to agritourism sales, but it does pertain to catering sales. Uh, but again, as Mrs. Little stated, we'd be more than happy to follow up, um, with, um, those questions as, uh, raised by, um, Mrs. Cheek and provide, um, any additional answers.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. That, uh, help you, Ms. Ms. Cheek?
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm back, I apologize for the, the difficulty I'm having. Um, I think Ms. Rollins explained the reporting part well, the, um, state law doesn't specify particular type of system that's needed for the administration of the meals tax, um, so it's really up like to, Ms. Rollins said to the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer, and of course, the county, uh, staff also worked with them to prepare the type of reports that wrote, that we would be expecting, um, but those reports would be required monthly, and that information would be, will be provided. I'm not sure if Mr., um, if the Commissioner is actually on the call right now, and he may be able to provide some additional in-depth information about that reporting system, but we will get that together. As far as the agritourism portion is concerned, um, like Ms. Rollins said, that it's really, the meals tax really applies to catering services and, um, and food and beverages that are sold at a grocery store, I'm sorry, food and beverages that are sold by a restaurant, prepared foods that are sold at a grocery store or a convenience, those are the only places where it would apply.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Uh, Ms. Cheek, is that, answer your question?
Uh, yes, it's very helpful, thank you so much for addressing it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, can you hear me?
Yes, can I hear you?
And so, um, Mr. Chair and the board, the, would be, if the board is so inclined to adopt the meals tax ordinance, which should be effective July one, with the slight amendment of removing the very last section, which is fifteen, I mean, I apologize, sixteen dash five sixty-nine.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Uh, there be no other comments on the public, uh, what is the pleasure of the board on meals tax?
Mr. Elliott, Mr. Elliott.
Yeah.
Mr. Elliott, I'm sorry, Ms. Powell, you're kind of, you're kind of breaking up, Ms. Powell, we have a farmer's market here in Surrey, um, and my understanding is prepared meals, would any of those, um, folks selling pastries and things that they prepare prior to getting to the farmer's market, would that be included in the sales tax?
Ms. Powell, in the meals tax, will.
She's still there?
And, Mr. Powell, while, while Danielle is, is coming back on, I want to make sure I understand your question as well, in event that I have to follow back up with an answer, but your question is, for those, um, caterers or, or bakers or those who are selling baked goods and other things at the farmer's market, will those sales be subject to the meals tax?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Waiting for Ms. Powell to jump back on for that, I, I don't want to say yes or no, I want to be certain before I provide an answer, and if she doesn't hop back on, I'll be more than happy to check on that and provide a answer.
That'll be fine, thank you.
Are there any other concerns from board members on this item? If not, we will get, we'll get the follow-up answer, uh, to Mr. Calhoun's question through staff. Uh, could we, uh, entertain a motion on the meals tax at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would approve the meals tax with the, as presented, after taking out section sixteen dash five sixty-nine, I think that's what Ms. Powell said, to exclude that from the, um, from the motion.
Have a motion, can we get a second?
Second, this is Tim Calhoun.
It has been properly moved in second, could we get a roll call vote, Ms., Mrs. Chapman?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes. Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next item is ordinance twenty four, zoning fee increase. At this time, the public, public hearing on this particular ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, Mrs. Powell, we're also, um, just wanted to give this the opening statement, um, as you, this was another ordinance that was, excuse me, this was another, um, revenue adjustment that was made in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Um, every so often, um, localities should, uh, review their, uh, planning and zoning fees to make sure that it is permissible with the cost necessary to provide the services. Um, it was, again, um, we did receive a notification during the budget, uh, season, uh, that, that was one of the things that we was looking at, and I believe, if I remember the number correctly, that the adjustment in the fees were to, um, increase the county's revenue by about fourteen thousand dollars. So, again, it's not necessarily about the additional revenue, but more or less in making sure that the fees that the county do have in place, um, closely, uh, match the costs that's provided for these particular services. And the fees that were included in the ordinance, uh, given, uh, Mr. Saunders did his due diligence as far as checking around with other jurisdictions just to make sure, um, we were providing, um, uh, fees that were, um, similar to what other jurisdictions were doing. So, that is the opening statement, um, for this particular ordinance. And if Ms. Powell is on, she can actually go through the ordinance at the board's discretion.
Are you there, Ms. Powell? I seem that we've lost Ms. Powell, uh, we have difficulties tonight with our, uh, cloudy weather, but, uh, we do open it up now, we thank Ms. Rollins for the opening statement on, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash four. Uh, at this time, we do open it up for public, for public hearing. There any comments from the public on this ordinance? There any questions from board members? If there be no questions, we will entertain a motion on ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four.
So moved by Tim Calhoun.
Have a motion, can we have a second?
Second.
Mike Gray.
It has been seconded by Ms. Little. Could we get a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you. Uh, last item on our public hearing for tonight is ordinance twenty twenty dash zero five, courthouse fees increase. Uh, is Ms. Powell there? Not, uh, ask Ms. Rollins to give a statement on it as well.
Mr. Chairman, this is the ordinance. Ms. Powell is there, okay?
Can I hear you? Thank you.
So would you like me to try and answer the, the other meals tax question, would you like me to move on to the security?
Yes, you can, you can answer that, and then we can move back to the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Um, the ordinance and the way I understand the meals tax, um, to work is that it really applies to restaurants or, um, cater, food that is catered, and I don't think that the, um, farmer's market is contemplated as either a restaurant or a catering service, so I do not think that it would necessarily apply to a farmer's market. But it would apply to a delicatessen, maybe apply to food prepared at a grocery stores, um, like I said, a restaurant, if there is a type of catering service.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, for clarification on that, thank you.
Can you still? Can you still hear me?
Yes, you can. We can hear you.
Okay. Moving on to the next ordinance, it's an ordinance to amend section twelve dash six of the Surrey County Code, which really just increases the courthouse and courtroom security fee from ten dollars to twenty dollars. This ordinance, or the purpose of these fees are, they're paid as a part of criminal and traffic cases in district and circuit court, and the purpose of the fees is for the construction, renovation, maintenance of courthouse or jail and court-related facilities. Legislation that has been adopted by the General Assembly allows that the fee be increased from ten dollars to twenty dollars, and so the ask is that the board increase the fee from ten dollars to twenty dollars and have that be effective as of July 1.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. This matter is now open to the public for public hearing. Any comments from the public? If there be no comments from public hearing, what is the place of the board on the matter of ordinance twenty twenty dash five, courthouse fee increase? Will there be a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, that we would adopt that courtroom fee change.
Second.
Second. It has been properly moved a second. Ms. Holmes, second, probably moved a second. Could we have a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, roll call vote, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Miss Carey, thank you so very much. That concludes, that concludes our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, this is-
Yes, Ms. Powell.
I apologize. My phone must have gone out. I, I'm not sure if we had the public hearing for the zoning fee increases. Did that already happen?
No. This is not the chairman, but we skipped it for some reason.
Okay, well, I was following this, Powell. Okay, we have to go back then to ordinance twenty twenty four, zero four, zoning fees increase. Ms. Powell?
Thank you. I believe, let me split up, so I make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Before you, this is the ordinance to increase zoning fees. As you can see in the chart before you, it shows the board and the public what the fee was and what the proposed fee is. The purpose of increasing these fees is so that it defrays the costs incurred by the county in making inspections, initiatives to implement, and just the general overall administration of the zoning ordinance and its interpretation. And so, the board assumes that these increased fees can have that also become effective as of July 1.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Thanks for bringing it back to my attention that we skipped this. Thank you. At this time, we will open it up to the public for public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty zero four, zoning fees increase. Are there any comments from the public? If there are no comments from the public, fellow board members, could we get a motion on zoning fees increase?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
It has been properly moved a second. Could we get a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And, Mr. Elliott, I apologize, but I do have a quick question.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
We did vote on that originally, but I don't know we got all the way through the roll call vote, so should I use this roll call vote to replace the first one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We had all, thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have closed our public hearing for tonight, and for tonight, we will, we will not have closed session. That was on the agenda. There'd be no closed session tonight. But we're moving to our reports. Ms. Rollins, do you have anything on our reports?
Um, yes, yes, sir. I want to add just a couple of things. To begin, most Tuesdays, we begin our, we hold a departmental roundtable where we talk about pertinent updates and information sharing during the pandemic since we are meeting virtually. The June 2nd and the June 9th meeting afforded me the opportunity to remind our team members to continue to take care of ourselves, both physically and emotionally as we continue to be good public servants and caregivers to our families as we cope with the pandemic that is obviously still with us. We do also try to encourage what we call good news stories, and I want to report on two things this evening as it relates to some good news that we can share regarding some accomplishments of our team members. Mrs. Pierce in the Social Services Department reported that she has two employees that have received recent degrees, a bachelor's and associate's degree, and then she also had one inter-office promotion, so we do want to congratulate those employees. And also, Ms. Pierce reported that she was elected by her peers as the Secretary of the Virginia League of Social Services Executive. So, we always want to recognize our accomplishments, so we want to say congratulations to Social Services and their team. Also, our Treasurer, Ms. Oneek Ruffin, completed her coursework in order to maintain her designation as the Master Governmental Treasurer. So, we also want to recognize and to congratulate Ms. Ruffin on her accomplishment. Other items to report this evening, our Department of Youth and Family Resources, we always talk about how we can best collaborate with the county and that department collaborated with the Department of Social Services to provide face mask coverings to children in what they felt was a vulnerable area in the county and to disseminate COVID-19 information to assist with knowledge and protections that were required during the pandemic. For eight weeks straight, the Department of Social Services coordinated serving hundreds of delicious donated meals that were prepared by the Virginia diner to Surrey residents. And this past Wednesday was their last week for that particular activity in the county. If you drove by the emergency, the new emergency operations and volunteer rescue squad, you would see that the lettering has been placed on the new facility. Now, the report in your agenda package is from Alpha Corporation and district supervisors, Mr. Holmes and Mr. Jury and other board members. Two celebrations definitely should be forthcoming for the completion of these projects in the county. And of course, these are projects that would serve us well from a quality of life, community, and economic development position. So, those projects are, again, slated for completion real soon, and we're looking forward to having celebrations and openings for those facilities and projects. In terms of the census updates, I'm hoping Mr. Harrison is on this evening, but we're still encouraging all of our board of supervisors members and also the mayors in each district and town to respect, to respectfully spread the word in your district and towns about the importance of the census update. And, Mr. Chairman, I've received quite a bit of information that had come from the Census Update Committee, and if Mr. Harrison is on, if I can ask him to go ahead and share that update, that would be great.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
All right, good. Good evening, Chairman Elliott. Board members assembled, virtually assembled, Mrs. Rollins and everyone else virtually assembled. I would like to, at this time, present to you a Surrey County Census update as of June 2020. I will start with the Surrey County response rate, and I think I do have an answer to a question that was posed by Mrs. Little concerning her district not being represented or reflected in the numbers. And I would like to note that Surrey and Bacon's Castle District's numbers have combined as well as the Dindron and Carsley districts. So, the numbers reflected for Surrey and Bacon's Castle have been combined as well as Dindron and Carsley have been combined. Compared to the state of Virginia's 6.58% response rate, Surrey and Bacon's Castle District reflect five, fifty-six point five percent response rate, response for census. The Claremont District, which encompasses Spring Grove, reflects forty-seven point three percent, and Dindron and Carsley districts will reflect forty-four point eight percent. So, that is the Surrey County response rate as it pertains to the census, 2020 census. I would also like to announce, as given to me by Mrs. Eunice Gay, who is the chairperson of the Complete Count Committee for Surrey County, the twenty, twenty twenty drive-through census push parade. Mrs. Gay has announced plans for the 2020 census push parade, the complete, sponsored by the Complete Count Committee, and they will be driving through the Surrey community, starting with the towns, encouraging citizens from their cars to complete their census information. Dates and times in the July for the parade or parades, they might have to have more than one, will be announced via the Surrey County website, the Surrey Sheriff's Department website, as well as social media. After the committee has finalized planning, they will release the date and times for the parades. And I would like to give a special thanks to the Surrey County Complete Count Committee, Ms. Shirley Gilliam, Census Representative, Ms. Linda Golson, who is our workforce coordinator, but also our staff census coordinator, as well as Sheriff Turner and the Surrey County Sheriff's Department for agreeing to assist with the census drive-through parade. And then, recent activities would be encouraging census participation at the Department of Social Services Meal and Commodities Distribution, which was located with Operation Center and Government Center. Of the census report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for the report.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And if there are other citizens that may be on the call, I know we have additional citizens who are part of the entire committee, so we appreciate all they're doing to help out with that census. And someone shared with me on yesterday the photos of the census workers actually working through the drive-through delivery meals and making sure they reach those citizens when they had the opportunity to do so, so that was great to see. I want to bring forth just FYI to the board members and to get any feedback you may have. And if we can't do it tonight, we can certainly entertain it at another meeting. But if you recall, in your, in your, in the budget, we discussed making adjustments to the solid waste convenience centers. I just want to give this general information as what we are anticipating proposing. If it's the general consensus of the board, we begin to notify a one-hour adjustment in the solid waste convenience city hours for all sites beginning the week of July 15, which permits the public to have three weeks to be notified of the new time. The anticipated change would be Monday, July 6. Currently, our centers, all of them, are operational Monday through Friday from seven to seven, weekends and holidays eight to four, five days close out of the year. The impact to hourly employees based on this change is roughly four hours per pay period. So, the recommended change, with Mr. Slade, we're recommending instead of the eight to, excuse me, instead of the seven to seven, to make an adjustment to eight to six. And this, of course, is in line with the budget reduction strategy to make some adjustments in the, in the budget to accommodate the consistent tax rate that we have. So, that was one of the changes, and of course, it was stated that we would implement that at the beginning of the fiscal year. Okay.
Thank you for that information.
Yes, and I will move on to the next item, the CARES Act. We talked about it a little bit. I had indicated that the funds were received on July, on June 1. As advised before, we do have a strategic CARES Act committee that we put in place. The goal of the committee is to receive all the guidance that has been passed down from the federal government. We're getting additional guidance weekly from the National Association of Counties, Virginia Municipal League, even the Government Finance Office Association, in addition to legal counsel from various groups putting together examples, also from fellow administrators and managers as it pertains to the permissible uses of the CARES Act funding. I had spoken to you briefly before that a portion of the CARES Act funding is to be allocated to towns if they have proven adverse impact as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. I have reached out to all three mayors just to let them know and make them aware of the CARES Act and to also advise them that I will be providing them some additional guidance, but understanding that the responsibility for the accountability and the use of the CARES Act does rest with the county. Localities, in addition to something that has been shared with me by our county attorneys, are requiring our towns to sign off on certifications similar to what our county, similar to what we had to do to make sure that everybody understands the responsibilities and the guidelines and criteria regarding the CARES Act funding and all the responsibilities that's associated with it. So, again, I want to share that with them and to put them to be able to give the counties some feedback as to how they feel their specific towns have been adversely impacted by COVID-19. So, I just wanted to let you all know that I've had that conversation with all the mayor. This item was already reported on our website, but everyone right now should already know that the Highgate Road Bridge project was completed, and that is back open for the public and for travelers. The last item that I have to bring to the board's attention, and a little bit was mentioned earlier, that was pertaining to the request from the Boy Scout Troop of Surrey, Sussex to request use of the boat slips at no cost. Currently, the Boy Scouts house their boats at the Holtwehr Marina, and according to the scout leader, is creating a partnership on the selling program. The scouts do sail in Surrey, and they also sail in Sussex. And I just want to make sure that I understand the consensus of the board tonight to have the scout leader to contact the packs at the marina and to, you all to provide guidance if you are permitting the scouts to use the slips at the marina at no cost.
That is, I believe that is the consensus of the board at this time. Do we have any discussion from board members on, on that?
Mr. Chairman, the last time I was down at the marina, there were no boats there, so we certainly have a lot of space. And I think it would be a shame if we didn't allow the Boy Scouts, you know, if we were filled up or we were overflowing or what, you know, but we're not. At least we were not that day. If we have a slip, I would support us allowing the Boy Scouts, of course, again, as I said, with no liability to Surrey. I don't know how they handle their liabilities, you know, for their boat, but I don't think that we should handle liability for the boat. So, we would need our attorney. I don't know what the attorney had to say about the boat at the slips.
Well, we're just looking for consensus tonight for the Boy Scouts to contact the packs who maintaining the boat ramp, the slip for the marina, and come up with some type of agreement on how it's going to be handled.
Thank you.
All righty. Also, Mr. Chairman, we received a request also, and no action is needed from the board. I'm just sharing the information as it pertains, again, and I should have mentioned this earlier as it pertains to the CARES Act, but there was a request that was received for $10,000 grant from the- But there was a request that was received for ten thousand dollar grant from the county underneath the local allocation for federal CARES coronavirus relief funds. And that was request came from the southeast for eight educational center. And that would be one of the things that we will list on the proposed uses of their funds when we are able to bring back information to the board prior to your July second public hearing on the use of those funds. Um, moving on, today I attended the virtual summer conference of ICMA. Um, there is a couple of topics pertaining to, of course, the COVID-19. Uh, one of the topics pertains to ethics in local government, COVID-19 and its aftermath. And obviously, a lot of conversation took place today on the impact of the virus on state and local budgets. And also, um, talked about ideas and innovation. So again, additional information to be able to share among team members here as we look towards coming up with planning for the use of those funds, a use of those funds. Um, the discussion on tomorrow, I must say that discussion on tomorrow in the conference pertains to life is good, the power of optimism. So I think that it's right up our alley in terms of looking for, um, ways that in the midst of what we're going through to realize that we can also be optimistic about the future that lies ahead of us. I'm looking forward to that discussion on tomorrow. Um, I do want to add that there is no Fourth of July event. Um, as our county has been always looked forward to that event that has been planned by Parkland Recreation, but localities all over have all canceled their July fourth event due to the pandemic. Um, you have additional FYI information in your board of supervisors' agenda packet. I will not go through those things in detail, other than to note that make sure that you are aware of the parade that's going to take place here during the normal parade route for our twenty twenty graduates. Again, the board, the consensus that a previous meeting agreed to, I guess, to list as supporter of that event. Um, so banners and signs have been purchased and would be placed along the parade route to show your support from a board to the twenty twenty graduates. And that concludes my report on this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for the administrative report. Uh, and as always, thank you for doing a exemplary job in keeping us informed. Uh, just want to let the citizens know at this time that we do receive your comments, because we are virtual. Uh, we would not be having the comments given tonight, uh, from the citizens, but we do get your comments and we do, as a board, look at your comments and we take great consideration of the comments that you give to the board. Uh, at this time, we have board comments, and I would like to start off by reiterating what Ms. Rollins said about the graduation. We do have a high school graduation on the thirteenth here in Surrey County. We want to commend all of our graduates. Uh, and we do want to show our support at the parade that will be at the normal parade route. Also, I would like to inform the citizens and board members that are on this meeting tonight that there will be a protest tomorrow, well, Friday evening on the twelfth at the statue in front of the courthouse. It is a planned protest where it is supposed to be a silent protest with just placards. As many of you know, we, that is a hotbed issue in the county. If you follow social media, you will see that there is a lot of dialogue going back and forth over the statue here in the county. I just want to admonish the members and the citizens of Surrey County to make sure that we do things in a peaceable way. There is new legislation that has come down, uh, Ju- July one as a fact, that is giving the local governments authority to act on the monuments in their particular jurisdiction. And the board members, we have been in discussion as to what in the direction we want to go. So we want everybody to maintain peace. We want, if there are protests, we want them to be peaceable and know that this item has come to the attention of the board and we will act accordingly after the legislation is passed on July one. So again, uh, we see that there are different things happening in different localities in Richmond and over in Portsmouth. And we don't want to mirror those things. We want Surrey to be the example on how to handle these different situations according to the law that has been given to us. So that is my statement and just want to ask everybody to maintain your safety precautions and that you have put in place because the COVID virus is still alive and well, the cases are going up. We are blessed. In the county, we've only had fourteen total cases and one death. Uh, but that is because, I believe, we have been put into practice, uh, the safety precautions that have been recommended. So we have to continue to do so, so that we can stay strong. Are there any other board comments at this time? Please feel free so to do, to give them.
A question. Uh, have we, have we started to discuss, uh, any type of reentry activities in terms of, uh, the members of the board attending, uh, meetings where we distance ourselves in order to have meetings? Or have we come to that discussion at all?
We, we have not discussed, uh, the board itself, but we had the reentry plan for the county. And based upon the current situation, we will remain virtual at this time until there is some change. But at this time, there has not been any in-depth discussion on the board meeting, uh, as opposed to what we have put in place for phase one in the county. Are there any other comments from board members at this time? Don't be shy. Yes, Mr. Jury?
Just want to reiterate to the citizens what you said about COVID. Um, let's just respect each other, and I think we can control this as we have by wearing masks and washing your hands and socially distancing. And I appreciate the citizens here in the county that do such. I've been to other localities where they don't. And just, just let's respect each other with that. And thanks so much for everyone that does it. And also, again, just thanks to Ms. Rollins for the work and the reports and the information she gives us. And thank you again. That's all.
Any other comments from board members? If there be no other comments, uh, we see that we do have, uh, items for our information as the board members to, uh, to look over those so we can stay abreast of what's going on. At this time, if there are no other comments from board members, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment until our July the second meeting, a virtual meeting at seven o'clock.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Judy Little?
Mike Drew, second.
And probably moving second, roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Motion is carried. God bless you guys. Take care of yourself. Be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.